Good evening. Welcome to the September 8, 2014 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Mayor Pro Tem Henderson lead us in the invocation. Please rise for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another wonderful day. We thank you for the blessings that you've given to us, the place that we have to live, the city of Troy, our ability to live in one of the finest communities around. We pray that you will bless this meeting and help us to make the decisions that are right in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The real call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. C1 is Move Across Troy: Big Beaver Road Symposium with an introduction by Maggie Hughes, manager's assistant. Good evening, Maggie. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to get started with the video, so I'll start first.
Okay.
So that was just a little video to demonstrate, not necessarily all the problems, just kind of what we're dealing with. One thing to focus on that was at the end when we were trying to get across, you had cars ignoring the walk signals. It's just kind of a culture change that we're trying to deal with. So Move Across Troy is our new initiative to examine pedestrian movement within Troy. The Big Beaver Corridor is a system that extends between Adams Road and Dequinder and what we're going to be focusing on this first time around. Within just 300 feet of this are over 1,600 businesses and residential addresses and more than 50,000 vehicles that travel Big Beaver each day. So we have an active, highly sought-after district that is lined with restaurants, shopping, and neighborhoods, and a business community and residents who want easier access. The issue that has been identified is that pedestrians face major barriers. Movement across and along Big Beaver is the first area identified for improvement by Move Across Troy. So the problem we're trying to solve now is how. We are hosting the Big Beaver Symposium to address this issue. Mark DeLaverne, the National Director for Transportation Planning for Sam Schwartz Engineering and the creator of the Chicago Pedestrian Plan, will be bringing his expertise to Troy to help us move across Troy. We will hold two sessions from 11:30 to 1:30 and from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Troy Community Center in Room 305. This is an open invitation to our residents and the business community to come in during their lunch or after work and school to learn more about the background of pedestrian problems, explore new technologies, share ideas, give their concerns, and help us identify creative solutions. This initiative is an extension in recent history of planning and zoning actions to encourage Big Beaver Road engagement and make the corridor more welcoming. By involving the community, experts, and state and regional stakeholders, we believe we can take major steps towards improvements. If you have any questions, cannot attend, and would like to share your ideas or concerns or would like more information, please email us at moveacrosstroy@troymi.gov. So just a kind of quick summary and overview of what we plan on doing. We have already sent out to all those 1,600 businesses and residents within 300 feet invitations to this public symposium. We're going to go in door-to-door to the businesses with flyers because they're the ones that brought this, not brought it to attention, but reinforced it in our attention that it was a problem. So we really want to make sure we engage this community moving forward. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Maggie?
Good job.
I know, good job, Maggie. We're all anxious to get this moving forward. It is an issue that is high on our radar, so it's nice to see it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
C2 is the FEMA preliminary damage assessment status with an introduction by Kristin Daeg, the Emergency Operations Planner. Good evening, Kristin. Good to see you again.
Thank you. Thank you for having me again. All right. So let me...
Sorry.
All right. So as you mentioned, I am back here today. Thank you for having me again. This is an update in regards to the process that after we declared a state of emergency, the steps passed that. And today I'm here to talk about the second phase of local damage assessment reporting process. On the screen right here, this is a picture of Police Officer Frank Schuler. He's rescuing this little girl and her mother from their flooded vehicle on Maple and John R. This image helps to capture how dangerous the conditions were that day and why it was necessary to declare a state of emergency for the city of Troy. All right. In the order of events, I'll first be talking about private property. And this was assessed first. In the second part, we will be talking about public property. The FEMA and state damage assessment teams arrived in Troy the evening of August 28th. Assessments to private property were ongoing from that evening to the next afternoon. On Friday, September 5, FEMA and the state came back to visit Troy to assess the public property. This was also the last day that they visited local jurisdictions. The information that we gave was compiled and was sent over to the state. So as I mentioned, Part 1 is inspections to private property. Organizations who participated were representatives from FEMA, Michigan State Police Emergency Management, Small Business Association, Oakland County Homeland Security, and local officials. On the right-hand column were city personnel who were very involved in the process. Here is a map to illustrate the areas that we visited. On Dequinder, north of Big Beaver, we visited Beaver Trail subdivision. South of that, we visited East Morrell subdivision. On Maple and Rochester, in Section 27, the Gables of Troy Apartments; in Section 36, on John R. and 14 Mile, Canterbury Apartments; and Section 35, as we talked about, the Panhandle was where there was the most damage that was reported. It's important to mention that we weren't able to visit every single household, but we got a good idea from these areas, the overall damage that the city of Troy experienced. There were six standard questions that were asked to everyone. This question three, are there any bedrooms in the basement? I'll refer back to because it's an important question. And here are the rest. Here is the chart that shows how FEMA classifieds damages. As you could see, it goes from affected to destroyed. And all single-family homes that we visited were either affected or minor. And the two apartment complexes that we visited, going back to the question three on the previous slide, bedrooms are defined as essential living space. Since these apartment complexes have units on the lower level, their classifications for damage went from minor to major damage. As I mentioned before, the U.S. Small Business Administration accompanied the FEMA and state teams, and they provide disaster assistance programs, which provide a low-interest disaster loan for uninsured losses to not only businesses but homeowners, renters, nonprofit organizations. And these low-interest loans are to help repair or replace damaged or destroyed real estate, personal property, machinery, and equipment, as well as inventory and business assets. As an example, a business with three facilities on Meyer Drive, which is located on Crooks and 14 Mile, they reported more than $1 million in damage with $350,000 deductible. The Small Business Administration tailors the repayment of each disaster loan to the borrower's financial capability. We're going into Part 2, which was inspections to public property. The building official, Mitchell Grusnick, which he was involved for the entire process, for the public property assessments, City Assessor Nino Lucari, City Attorney Lori Bloom, and I met with FEMA and the state about the damage costs associated to public property and percentage insured. We then visited the site that reported the largest estimated cost. This was the lift station on Stevenson Highway. As a reminder, other costs associated to public property include the fire truck, a police car, history, the historic village, road closures, and debris removal. Now that the assessment to private property and public property is finished, this form will be completed and submitted to the state. If there is a federal declaration, FEMA could grant all the funding or choose to cover a percentage of the cost related to first responders, vehicles and equipment used during the flood incident, labor and repairs, debris removal, associated costs to volunteers such as those that helped out at the historic village, and any effort put towards gathering information and documents for FEMA. Any potential funding does not cover percentage insured. State officials use damage totals and impact data, which is the classified affected, minor, and major damage, to determine whether the disaster meets established criteria and can warrant the governor to request a federal declaration and assistance. As an update, state officials are right now requesting a 30-day extension because the governor had a deadline for all the local damage assessments to be at his office at September 10, which is two days from now. They requested this extension to get a more comprehensive and accurate overall assessment of the tri-county area because we only get one opportunity to request a federal declaration. So the next steps in the process, after the governor sends a request to FEMA, our regional headquarters, which is located in Chicago, sends a recommendation to the White House. And we should hear back about their decision on whether to grant federal assistance by the end of October or before then. That's all.
Great. Very good. Any questions for Kristin? Councilman Pennington?
Kristin, I have one question. What is the date for the last reporting of the claim to the city? I know it was either 40 or 45 days. You know when that exact date is?
I can take that one, Mayor. It's 45 days from the date of the incident, so.
Okay, 45 days?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so they still have a couple of days left then. If they haven't got around to it.
Certainly, yeah, they can file it, and the information is on the webpage to file a claim, or they can drop it off. The claims are filed in the city attorney's office.
Thanks, Lori.
Any questions? Thank you, Kristin. It's nice to get the status update because we still get emails. I got one a couple of weeks ago, a couple of days ago I passed along, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no carryover items or public hearings scheduled this evening. Next is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. The kiosk is broken out front this evening, so our first speaker is Richard Peters. Troy resident.
Good evening. Nice to see you. You've been gone. You've been gone.
Right. Well, I've been busy. Down the street, well, I was going to bring up Easter Island because of, you know, the Spanish, when they went out there, it was either Spanish or French or the Portuguese. They went to Easter Island and they, you know, they went and it was a bully, a less place and whatnot, and we all heard the story about 100 years later, they'd come back and nobody was left, and everybody wondered what happened. Sometimes I feel that that applies to the city of, not only the city of Troy, but to the suburbs or development, developers. Down the street from me, there was this, you know, this fellow, they're developing the land, they got, you know, he wants to put a nice subdivision, investment in the city, and everybody's happy, you know. But it's not happy. That's an old growth forest. It was a lomy, acidic soil. There was frogs there. There was possums there. I believe there's a few raccoons or used to be porcupines. This is not even a tree there now. And I'm wondering, this is the second time I've seen this, and it was placed over on Dequiner. I'm wondering, how does this happen? How? And it's just so, it's terrible. It's just, it kind of combines with the policy of, we seen where Toledo a few weeks ago, they didn't have water to drink. I've heard about the Arctic melting, and according to David Bloom, under all that Arctic is methane gas, which is just waiting to emanate up into the atmosphere, kind of like Venus. Yet somehow, this is supposed to be okay. Well, for me, it's not okay. You know, I think even coming here tonight, I noticed that the sun seems a lot brighter to me than it used to. Now, maybe it's just an illusion to me or just something else, but I just thought I would bring that up, to bring to the councils attention on that. Maybe there's something we could at least try to do about some of this stuff. So thank you for the time, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Tom Kazupski. Good evening, Tom. I see you're carrying something.
Yes, we are. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Member of the council. On behalf of the Steering Committee, which is amongst about 45 people, and the 250 volunteers that are involved with Troy Family Days, we're here to formally invite you to come and visit us this weekend and see what we have put together for the people of this community. We have a lot of things going on, and I have Cheryl, my wife, here with me, and she's, it's all right if she passes out a little gift for each member of council.
Absolutely.
Well, I tell you, we have, of course, the Giant Midway. If you've gone by, you can see that started to go up. We have Animal Oasis, a giant petting zoo, which is about a quarter acre, and exotic animals. We have a flywire zip line that we'd like to see a couple of people maybe have a race on.
Thanks, Sharon.
Actually, when we have, we are inviting anybody that's running for public office to come on the zip line and have a race with their opponent. And the one that we support will have a waxed line, so. We also have opening ceremonies on Thursday and a naturalization ceremony that is special with 50 new citizens being sworn in. We have free parking on the entire site, plus shuttle service from Walsh College for the overflow. We also have a water battle and chili cook-off between the Troy Fire Department and the City of Clausen Fire Department. For the first time in about 20 years, we have a wrestling show coming back for everybody's enjoyment on Sunday. This year, we have partnered with WCSX Radio, and they are going to be there on Saturday with, what's her name?
Trudy Daniels.
Trudy Daniels on Saturday, who will be giving out some prizes and things like that, and a very good partners for us. And we also have Radio Disney coming in, which is kind of hard to get. They come in, and we have them on both Saturday and Sunday for the kids to enjoy, and Doc McStuffins is going to be there. And of course, we have our favorite, the official clown of Troy Family Days, is Roscoe the Clown will be there for your enjoyment, and you ran into him, Mayor, last year. You know what he's about. So, yeah, we'd be glad to have you come and enjoy the goodies. It'll help keep you awake during the Lions game later on, and we hope to see you all there this weekend.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. We'll be there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for the gift.
You're welcome.
My granddaughter's favorite, cotton candy. I'm going to ask if there's anyone else that wishes to speak this evening. I know the kiosk is broken this evening, so we'll allow others to speak if there's anyone here. Next is city council or city administration response. Is there any response this evening? So we will move to regular business. First, I1 is board and committee appointments, and there are no mayoral appointments this evening. Next are board and committee nominations. This evening, I will move that the mayor of the city of Troy hereby forwards the following nominated person to serve on the board and committee as indicated to the next regular city council meeting for action. And this evening, I will nominate student Frank Bowden for the Planning Commission appointment this evening. Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson, that we nominate Frank Bowden as the student representative for the Planning Commission. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is nominations by city council. I will turn the microphone over to Mayor Pro Tem Henderson.
Thank you. I'd like to forward the following nomination for the Liquor Advisory Committee. Student Robert Huber, who wishes to be reappointed for a term expiring July 31, 2015.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we nominate Robert Huber as the student representative for the Liquor Advisory Committee. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. I3, there is no request for closed session this evening, so we will move to I4, the proposed 15-year extension of the Joint Automotive Alley Smart Zone, LDFA, and Troy Subcommittee by hosting a satellite smart zone in St. Clair County with an introduction first by city manager Brian Kishnik, and a presentation by Mr. Carlisle, our planning consultant. Mr. Kishnik?
Mayor and council, thank you very much. This is one of those issues where approximately two years ago, when I arrived in Troy, I met with a gentleman named Ken Rogers, who I'm sure everyone knows here, but is an extraordinary person with one of the finest operations in the country in terms of automation alley. And when we met, and Mr. Carlisle and I met with Mark Miller, and you may notice that Mr. Miller and Mr. Rogers are not here tonight, and I'm going to talk about that in a second because this is a very important issue that they wouldn't be here on. But when we met, we talked about a host of things, one of which, when you establish the smart zone for Automation Alley back in 2002 or 2003, it expires in 2017. Automation Alley has grown significantly and does great work in not only Oakland County but in eight, 10 counties. So they have growth issues, they have opportunities for locations, and we wanted to make sure that Automation Alley, which is based right here in Troy, Michigan, stays in Troy, Michigan, continues to do the work that they need to do, and they have a long-term plan. And that's why we are proposing tonight and giving a presentation on this smart zone extension. Now, to do that, it wasn't easy. People like Dick Carlisle, who worked on this day and night, who's trying to find a partner outside of Oakland County, we'll go through the criteria in a second, but trying to find this partner outside of Oakland County, who had financial resources to bring to the table, which is the requirements for an extension of the smart zone, was not easy. But Dick and Mark Miller and Ken Rogers and Kelly Koslowsky, who's here from Automation Alley, and Glenn Lepin, who's in our office, were able to do this, and it's incredible that we're here before you tonight. The LDFA has approved this. I just received a text from Mark Miller that the joint meeting between Port Huron and Kimball Township was held tonight at 6 o'clock, and they approved this. So that's where Mr. Rogers and Mr. Miller are tonight. They're over in St. Clair County, trying to get this approved for our partners, and we're here tonight making this presentation to you. So tonight, we have Dick Carlisle, Glenn Lepin, and Kelly Koslowsky from Automation Alley to explain exactly what's going on in this complicated issue, but ever so important, so.
Thank you. Good evening. Well, I must admit, Mr. Kishnik, I did expand Automation Alley's number of counties on you. Being a planner, I'm anticipating they're going to have 10 counties in a very short period of time. But it is eight, because that's the reason Kelly's here to correct me, to make sure that I give you the straight facts. Your manager has correctly stated this. This has been a very challenging effort, but one in which, one of the things that has demonstrated to me some of the best things about local government, because as the story unfolds, hopefully council will see the extraordinary collaboration that has gone on between the city of Southfield, the city of Troy, and the city of Port Huron and St. Clair County with our partner Automation Alley and Kelly's.
I was just received a text from, from Mark Miller that the joint meeting between Port Huron and Kimball Township was held tonight at six o'clock, and they approved this. So that's where Mr. Rogers and Mr. Miller are tonight. They're over in, in Saint Clair County, trying to get this approved for our partners, and we're here tonight making this presentation to you. So tonight, we have Dick Carlisle, Glenn Lapin, and Kelly Koslowski from Automation Alley to, to explain exactly what's going on in this complicated issue, but ever so important, so.
Thank you. Good evening. Need to do just advances here. Well, I must admit, Mr. Kishnik, I did expand Automation Alley's number of counties on you. Being a planner, I'm anticipating they're going to have ten counties in a very short period of time. But it is eight, because that's the reason Kelly's here to correct me, to make sure that I give you the straight facts. Your manager has correctly stated this. This has been a very challenging effort, but one in which, one of the things that has demonstrated to me some of the best things about local government, because as, as the story unfolds, hopefully council will see the extraordinary collaboration that has gone on between the city of Southfield, the city of Troy, and the city of Port Huron and Saint Clair County with our partner Automation Alley, and Kelly's here tonight to represent Automation Alley if there's any questions in that regard. To give you a bit of history, in two thousand and three, the city of Southfield and the city of Troy formed a joint LDFA for the purpose of essentially providing support to Automation Alley through the creation of a certified technology park and a smart zone designation for, from the state for the Automation Alley Park that is located here in the city of Troy. Had Southfield not agreed to allow the city of Troy to join as a joint LDFA, we would have not been able to get that designation, and we would not be standing here today as a result. So I think we all have to acknowledge at the outset here that the city of Southfield has been a, a great partner in terms of cooperation from that point in time forward. Now, since currently, the tax capture from our LDFA in the Automation Alley Smart Zone Park is one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, is actually more than what we anticipated because of the addition of the terminal, the truck terminal is back on the tax rolls, and some improvement in the, the performance in the area. So we're actually capturing more now than what we anticipated. What that means is that because of the current arrangement with Automation Alley, approximately seventy-five thousand of that goes to Automation Alley to, to support your foundation membership and assist them with the operations of Automation Alley. However, it also means that there has been something in the neighborhood of sixty percent of those, those dollars that go towards infrastructure improvements within the city of Troy, and those have been contributed towards improvements to Big Beaver Road, the McCullough Drain, and other infrastructure improvements. And that is anticipated, that will continue forward in terms of an approach that we want to continue to, to keep that park in an improved fashion, and the infrastructure is very important in that particular regard. We all know that Automation Alley provides an important economic development partnership. It is our link to growing businesses. There's a hundred and fifty-three, I think, members, businesses in the city of Troy that are members of Automation Alley. There's approximately a thousand members throughout that eight-county region that are members, and it's an organization that's received natural recognition in terms of the types of things that they're doing, particularly in terms of, of promoting international business, their International Business Center, and their support for technology-based businesses. And so it's been a tremendous effort that's received a lot of recognition, and one which is, is growing in support in terms of the region. So it fits in very nicely with what some of the goals of the state are, which we'll talk a little bit more here in a moment. So in two thousand and thirteen, city manager Kishnik, Mr. Kishnik and Mr. Miller and I began to explore with Mr. Rogers from Automation Alley ways to help Automation Alley remain in Troy and perhaps even, you know, be able to expand their business. They are more or less busting at the seams, and that was really the first order of business to see what physically could be done on-site or in partnership with neighbors to really allow them to stay in the city of Troy physically. But there was a bigger problem than just that. It's not just the issue of physical space, it's the, you know, issue of supporting operations going forward. So we did review all of the various options and met with various organizations, including the state, including the county, and at that point in time, we were informed that MEDC was going to be announcing their options for either a five-year or a fifteen-year extension of the LDFA. So we immediately did apply for, as I think council is aware, for the five-year extension, and we were approved for that. We've been approved for the five-year extension. However, the caveat to our application to the state was, is that we would continue to explore the fifteen-year extension. Now, as you might expect, a fifteen-year extension has much more challenging requirements. The first being is that you need the, the host LDFA, which is the Joint Southfield-Troy LDFA, has to agree to, to identify a satellite. And that may seem like a simple task at the outset, but it's really very complicated when you look into it, because for one thing is that satellite has to be located outside of your distinct geographic area. That distinct geographic area, in the opinion of the state, is Oakland County. So we had to search for a partner outside of Oakland County and looked at various options. We were fortunate to be able to find Port Huron, which I'll speak about in, in a moment, but, but we were only fortunate because they were able to meet some of the other criteria. First of all, that satellite has to have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar operating budget at its outset, and that's a very difficult task in the state of Michigan, but the Port Huron LDFA was able to accomplish that right off the bat. It also has to have unique characteristics and specialties, and we identified the fact that there was the international trade aspect associated with Port Huron and some of the growing technology-based businesses in Port Huron that were able to offer that unique aspect. Both the host and the satellite need to create benefits to the regional cooperation and collaboration, and I'll speak to that in a moment, but all agreed on that particular aspect. They need to add value to your mission as a host LDFA, which we were also able to identify where that does, that will occur. It has to be able to stimulate growth of technology-based businesses and jobs. So the city of Troy and the city of Southfield and this new LDFA proposed to enter into an LDF agreement, LDFA agreement, in order to accomplish all these things. So these were all the prerequisites at the outset. And then finally, the deadline for proposed submission had to be, we had to accomplish all this, we have to accomplish all this by September thirtieth. So the host cities, upon approval of the city of Troy, are proposing to form this host and satellite relationship with the, what is now going to be called the Saint Clair County Innovation and Technology Smart Zone, CITEC. It will be composed of initially Port Huron, but it'll be expanded into the neighboring Kimball Township. So again, this is another very good example of intergovernmental cooperation, because they're bringing the neighboring township in, who has a substantial amount of land area to add to the existing base of the city of Port Huron, and the Saint Clair County Economic Development Alliance, which is going to be kind of the entity that holds all this together. Now, in order to satisfy the regional collaboration and cooperation criteria that the state is really imposing, we all agreed that we have an entity that's already doing that. We have Automation Alley. And why not all agree to provide our full support behind Automation Alley, because they're performing this function in an eight-county region? It is coverage that is broader than any other economic development region in the state in terms of performing this kind of, of service, and all agreed to that. In return, all the communities said that we also wanted to have a, a more specific list of services that Automation Alley would provide, one of which will be to be the coordinating body between the host and the satellite, to be able to identify opportunities for businesses that are located within the host or in the satellite that might be potentially available in either's geographic area. So there is tremendous opportunity for Troy-based businesses, for example, in terms of potential in the satellite LDFA, particularly in the areas of international trade, border security, and things of that nature. And so all have agreed to participate in supporting Automation Alley, and Automation Alley has agreed to provide more direct services to the three communities that are involved in this, in student before, involved in this particular effort. So what does this do? What are we asking of council tonight? And that is to pass a resolution supporting the host-satellite relationship. If we are successful in receiving your approval, the city of Southfield has approved it. I believe we are well on the path to have, well, no Kimball Township and Port Huron in their joint meeting approved it. I believe Port Huron's LDFA is next on the docket, which we hope will be done in a might. If we receive your approval, we'll be, we will be submitting this application tomorrow because we're not going to rely upon a September thirtieth deadline. We, we want to make sure that we get this application in right of way. So what this will do, it will provide a fifteen-year extension, it will provide a very predictable path for Automation Alley to remain in Troy for the remaining life of your LDFA plus fifteen years, so it's roughly nineteen more years. It will offer a number of new opportunities for businesses in Troy for job growth and expansion. If we're successful in receiving our approval from MEDC, we will be a part of a select group of smart zones that are going to receive this. And so consequently, my guess is, and it's just a guess, and my experience is, the state will be devoting more resources to these particular areas because they have set aside a select group of smart zones to be able to continue on for an extended period of time. All in all, this is a great opportunity to develop new economic development resources, a new tax base, job growth, and new business growth for all of the partners who are involved in this extension of the fifteen-year LDFA. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Great. Thank you. Great job. Any questions from Mr. Carlisle? Just because we don't have any questions doesn't mean that we're against this. And having, having said that, I've been on the LDFA board for five years. It's, it's a very important part of Troy to me. Automation Alley headquarters is something that you can brag about, something that Troy's always been proud to have Automation Alley's headquarters here. You see that the signs in other counties, the other eight counties, and their sign says "Member of Automation Alley." It doesn't say headquarters. So that's always been important to me, and, and that's why I am voting yes for this, is because we want Automation Alley to stay here, and it's very important, so. Having said that, I will move the resolution to approve the proposed fifteen-year extension of the Joint Automation Alley Smart Zone, LDFA, and Troy Subcommittee by hosting a satellite smart zone in Saint Clair County as printed in the agenda.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by five other members of city council at the same time. So I will just ask Ms. Bittner to choose one of those five. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Thanks for all your hard work. I know behind the scenes, I've talked to the city manager, and thank, thank you for all the work that you've done behind the scenes for this. I know it wasn't easy. Thank you so much. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
See Mr. Vandette moving forward, so that means I-five, a cost-participation agreement for additional work, concrete slab replacement on Crooks Road to Waddles to Square Lake. And I think we're also getting an update on Troy Roads Rock. Is that true? Okay.
That's right, Mayor. While he's cueing the music, we will, he will provide an update on one of the larger projects going on right now, troyroadsrock.com, and then get to the cost-sharing agreement.
Good evening, Steve.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here once again to talk about my favorite, favorite project, at least for now, the Major Roads Program, otherwise known as Troy Roads Rock. I'm here to give you a brief update on the program, and if I can find the clicker here. What happened? Okay, here we go. Okay, I'm, I'm happy to report that we are almost done. The city's contractor is nearly done with Big Beaver. Previously, we completed Long Lake, we completed Long Lake-Northfield Parkway to I-seventy-five and John R. You see what we've completed to date, and Big Beaver, they're working on the westbound side, and traffic was switched today to the outside lane, to the curb lane, and the, the median lane and the center lane is closed while they work on the, on the median lane. By the end of this week, they expect to be poured out, and next week, early next week, we expect to see Big Beaver between Rochester and Dequender fully open both ways. However, shortly thereafter, a contractor will come in and start sealing, sawing and sealing the joints. They'll start on the eastbound side and finish, they'll do the sawing and sealing of the joints, which will require some lane closures, and that'll be a moving operation. Once they get done, they'll, they'll turn west and complete that side, and there will also be some pavement marking be done, being done at that same time. After that, they're going to move to Dequender, and Dequender is going to be sometime in October, it's yet to be determined, but as I said, Big Beaver by the end of this week can be poured out, next week be open for a short time, and we expect by the twenty-sixth of September that Big Beaver will be open, fully marked, all the joints sealed and, and everything. Dequender is a relatively small portion of the, of the program. It's only two percent of our overall program, so in a couple of weeks, we are going to be ninety-eight percent complete, at least with the city's contracted portion. Now, the work coming up, the road commissions, with the road commissions contractor, actually it's already in progress, Big Beaver Adams to City Hall, they are working on the westbound side, and as you know, the intersection of, I'm sorry, the eastbound side and the intersection of Adams and Big Beaver is closed to, through traffic on Adams. They are telling us that they expect to open that intersection to Adams the week of September fifteenth, and they also expect to complete work on the eastbound side the week of September fifteenth. At that time, they're going to begin working on the westbound side. And it was just last week that they informed us that they decided to not do work on both sides at the same time, which I think was a, a good move on their part. That's how we are handling our work, and if someone does get caught in the traffic van, they can always find a, a turnaround, a median turnaround, and bail out and, and find a mile road north or south to get out of the construction zone. So we thought that was good news, and they are progressing and on schedule, hopefully to be done in November. Crooks-Waddles to Square Lake, construction started August twenty-eighth. It started with marking the pavement for removals, and immediately after it was marked, we noticed there was some sections, particularly in the intersection, that were not marked, and we could not let that stand. And I'll show you an example of what we found in, in the Square Lake-Long Lake intersection. This pavement here is, would have been left, and of course, that, that could not stand. That pavement would certainly break up over the wintertime, and we would have all kinds of potholes and, and damage claims and so on and so forth. So immediately, I consulted with city manager Kishnik and told him that we needed to consider adding to the project, and I had already talked with the road commission for Oakland County, and they said, well, we have, we are absorbing hundred and, I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand because the bid that they received, the low bid they received was, was more than all available state funds. So they were absorbing the two-ninety-seven, they're tapped out, they did not have any more money to add, so in real time, we informally, at that time, about a week and a half ago, we informally agreed, the city and the road commission, to add the work to the project, and they proceeded with the saw cutting and the marking. We marked out the additional pavement, and while they did that, we proceeded to work on a cost-participation agreement. And that cost participation agreement was finished last week, and it's before you tonight for approval. Just to, I guess I, to carry on with a brief update, I suppose, this, this is a map showing all the work that we're doing. Big Beaver, as I mentioned, is almost complete, Dequender in October, and then what's in yellow, I'm sorry, in green is the road commission work. And coming up, I'll talk about in a second, is Long Lake Mill and Overlake. Other projects, real quick, Livernoy Project is coming up. We don't have a date yet from the road commission. That's going to start, obviously, after Troy Days, and it's going to be sometime late September or October. This is Livernoy, this is a replacement of the culvert under Livernoy, and just north of. of Big Beaver, and that's going to entail a nine-day closure of Livernoy. And so before that happens, there's going to be a lot of information put out about that closure in advance of that happening. Now, Long Lake Adams to Northfield Parkway, this is a mill and asphalt overlay project. It's milling three inches off and putting three inches back. And ordinarily, we like to do work in front of high schools in the summertime when school is out. That's why we scheduled John R. for the summer and Long Lake in front of Troy High for the summer before school started, and we did get those completed. However, we could not do this with this particular project because we were notified July 2nd from the state that we were going to get $1.5 million for this project, and this funding is use it or lose it. And so we had to hurry up and do the engineering work, which we started immediately, preparing plans and specifications, and we completed those even before we got the agreement on July 30th and approved it. City council approved it on August 11th. We opened bids on August 13th, and we awarded contract August 25th. Last week, we had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, and Troy High School was represented by a school official, and we are coordinating with them because this work will entail partially in front of Troy High, and it will affect their driveway out onto Long Lake. During the pre-construction meeting, they indicated that they would close down that driveway during construction, and they indicated they have a very good way, system, to get information out to students and parents, and they're going to do that in advance of closure of that driveway. So everyone will be coming into Troy High off of Northfield Parkway. So we'll continue that coordination throughout the construction. It should be relatively a quick process. It's asphalt overlay, you mill it, you fix what's needed to be fixed, and you proceed with the overlay. It's relatively quick compared to concrete. And then last, we have the I-75 overlay, $400,000. This is also money from the state, and the schedule is unknown at that time. That'll be handled by MDOT, and that's 12 miles to Square Lake. So again, our page views to date on our Troy Roads Rock page as we get the word out. And things change every day, and sometimes it's hard to keep up with it, but we do our best, and page views to date, about 9,254, and that's as of September 2nd. So I'm sure that's going to grow as we continue on. Now, back to the item I-5 on your agenda. As I mentioned, this is for a cost-participation agreement for $100,000 in additional work, mainly at the intersections of Square Lake and Crooks and Long Lake and Crooks. And as you can see from the video, that was an example of pavement conditions that we just could not let stand. And so we needed to proceed quickly, and we did, and brought this all together, and it's here for your approval tonight. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve this evening? Mayor Protem Henderson.
Steve, it says our portion is 100,000, and you mentioned 297,000. So what portion is, so is Oakland County paying 197, or?
The way this breaks down is that from the state, there is $1 million in state funds, and the road commission is kicking in 297,131. That's the amount that the low bid was over the available state funding. So over and above that, there's 100,000 needed to be done mainly in the intersections work, which is work that we painted out ourselves and measured and calculated what the cost would be.
Any questions? Steve, I was on Crooks today, Crooks Road northbound. I would advise anybody that's, you can on the website to stay off of that road. It's down to one lane, all the way from Waddles to past, about a half mile past Square Lake right now, and it was backed up at least to Big Beaver.
It was backed up onto I-75, too. I forgot about it and exited, and it just, people have to be patient.
Yeah, and it's also backed up on Corporate Drive because people are trying to, thinking they're going to take a shortcut to get up there, and then that backed up all the way to Long Lake. So it's a mess.
Best thing to do, and I hear this all the time, is to avoid the construction zone.
That's my comment, if we could put it on the webpage, avoid Crooks Road at all costs at this point, for sure.
Strongly advised.
Right. Thank you. Somebody like to move the resolution? Mayor Protem Henderson.
I'd like to move I-5 as printed.
Support. Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve I-5 as printed on the agenda this evening. Discussion.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Hoderek.
I live over in that area and drive that road frequently. There is actually a safety issue with what they witnessed there, watching people swerve in the summer months, we're not even talking pothole season. It's absolutely the right thing that we're doing, not just for cosmetic reasons on the roads and ease of driving, but I have witnessed the safety issues, and I'm really glad that it was seen and comprehended as quickly as the team did.
I agree. I think we made a decision months ago that we didn't want sections like that to be left in the city anymore. And I commend the administration for recognizing that, Mr. Van Dett and your staff. That's exactly what I think we're trying to prevent. One small little section can make it look bad, the whole thing can look bad, so I appreciate it. Thank you. The vote, Ms. Bittner.
Mayor Protem Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Anyone on council wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Fleming.
It is I that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Councilman Fleming and supported by Mayor Protem Henderson that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner.
Councilmember Hoderek.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson.
Yes.
Motion passes. If you are here on a consent agenda item this evening, they have all been approved. Next, our memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none submitted this evening. Next is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And seeing as the kiosk was broken this evening, if anyone is here that wishes to speak, please let me know. There are now council referrals. Next is council comments. Any comments from council this evening? There are several reports that were in the agenda packet this evening. Are there any comments on those reports this evening? Next, our comments for items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy, not residents of Troy and not from Troy businesses. Is there anyone this evening that wishes to speak on this item? There are no study items, no closed session. We are adjourned.